Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I would like to call the May 14th, 2024 Planning Commission regular meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Present.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
I am here.
And I'll note for the record that Vice Chair Tagney is absent.
Thank you for that. We are joined this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I would like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
To what happened in June 2021 in Surfside, Florida, which is on the border of Miami Beach and Surfside. I'm sure you're probably aware of this. There was a collapse of a mid-rise building that killed about 98 people. And it was built in the early 1980s. And afterwards, there was pretty extensive articles in the New York Times on what went wrong with having something that really and relatively isn't that old collapse. And it's relevant to the fact that it's a coastal area and we are, you know, going to be planned as a do mid-rises here. And there is a good test case of what potentially like hundreds of them that are now having to go through some pretty extensive 20-, 30-year reviews by structural engineers and a lot of lawsuits. So what came out of that particular issue was a settlement that was over $1 billion. That's $1 billion for one building that collapsed. And they also were looking at city officials, the company that built the building. He had died. And even the building that went next door to it in Miami Beach was a high-rise, had to contribute, I think it was $200 million, from the fact that they were just digging, you know, a block away. So this is relevant because we, in the past, we had our fire district come here, I think it was October 4th, 2022, and basically said to you, under no circumstances should you be talking about the height of buildings at this point because it's very premature. We don't have the information. A lot of time elapsed. They tried to get back to, and I think it was January the 10th, 2023, they came in front of you. I'm doing this because not everybody here was a present and basically said to you, do not build anything over three stories because we don't have the manpower, we don't have the equipment. And so here we are. We heard, some of us heard those because of what they had to say. I think they've reached out with letters to follow up on this. So the question is, we never had a conversation about this. And I'm just wondering, what is going on that we seem to be on this track to approve this? And we haven't addressed it. And could be that if the worst happens, there has been fires since then that have affected mid-rises exactly how they predicted on Sorrel Place when they had two oven fires. And this would be something that would not only be a lawsuit, but people would be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Please.
Hello, Commission members. Glenn Caldwell. The general plan is a result of more than two years of community engagement and planning commission and city council review and revisions, so says the intro to the general plan. I've been a renter in Arcata and now a property owner in the Sunset neighborhood since 1985. I've tried to be a part of the community engagement that is referred to continually. I've attended Planning Commission and city council meetings, participated in Gateway Area Planning Walks, provided public comment at meetings, but alas, like many of Arcata's residents, still feel unheard. In Arcata's general plan, under the residential low-density zoning definition, it is stated that under current state land use and planning law, single-family zones are allowed to construct multiple dwelling units per lot in a single-family residential zone and may allow up to four residential units on most RL lots. In Table 2.3 of the general plan, under implementation measures in Section LU9, it discusses pursuing a rezoning to allow mixed use and more housing in current RL neighborhoods, including the Sunset area and four other neighborhoods. We have already densified. I can show you scenes on our streets in the Sunset area that are packed with cars. People aren't abandoning their cars, not yet. Kids come here from out of the area to Humboldt State. They bring their cars. Their parents buy them cars. The general plan still contains the implementation measure to rezone Bayview, Northtown, Arcata Heights, Upper INJ Street, the Sunset neighborhoods for four-story apartments and local-serving commercial uses throughout the residential and historic neighborhoods. With the state density bonus law, these can be six-story buildings, should that ever be enacted here. Here is my concern, a nightmare scenario, if you will. A developer offers to purchase two parcels to the south of my home. Willing buyer, willing seller, that scenario. Developer opts to tear down both of the 1940-ish bungalows, obtains approval to merge the two formerly residential low-density zone parcels into one larger parcel, gets approval to build a multi-story apartment with commercial business space on the first floor next to my home. The height of the new building now causes solar shading on my existing solar arrays, which I was required by the state of California to put in when I built my project, rendering it useless. My home, my yard, formerly a private sanctuary, are now the view looking north of my new neighbors. As a property owner in Arcata, would I be negatively impacted by this scenario? Yes. Would I have any recourse? Should I just sell my property to the same developer and leave Arcata? With an overriding density overlay zone essentially trumping the residential low-density zoning that was in place when I purchased my property, do I have any recourse? Increased density to existing built-out, built-out and already ADU-dense neighborhoods is a concern. Given the state density bonus law, if the city allows...
Thanks for your comments, Glenn. Appreciate that. Thank you for sharing.
My name's Joanne McGary. I'm a resident in the City of Arcata, and I'm going to stay a resident in the City of Arcata, even though I am losing the housing I've had for five and a half years. At the end of this month, I was fortunate to find a new place to live in the City of Arcata, walkable, because last week I gave up my car. I'm living for the future right now. I rode my trike here today. I don't have a car. I'm trying to live simply, but I'm trying to live in a place that's safe, sane, and affordable for somebody like me. That's, those are three things, not just affordable, but safe and sane. So I want you to remember all this. I'm just a member of the public, like so many people. I'm a constituent. I'm a fellow citizen like you all are. We all have certain skills, talents, and abilities, knowledges. I really miss Judith's knowledge and her ability on this commission, and I wish that she had been kept on the dais because she does bring a unique perspective. Like, we all have a different perspective, but hers is very professional and, well, a lot of learned wisdom of her years as a planner and a professor. But be that as it may, I just want to say that Arcata is a small rural college town. It's got a history that I've been looking into that's, in some times, quite atrocious in what some people have done to this community in terms of draining the bays and chopping down the forests. And if Sorrel Place is going to be emulated in any shape or form, I really worry about our community. I've long said that we can build creatively and house people who are already here and people who are coming here in a very creative way, and we don't have to cooky-cutter like other communities do, especially big urban cities. I lived in San Francisco for 25 years, but lived in a very modest little in-law apartment out in the Sunset near Stern Grove. So it's not that high-rise living is really appropriate for Arcata and Humboldt County. And I say that the only thing tall in our community should be the redwoods. We can learn a lot by how the understory is created in our redwood forests. And so three stories with a functional rooftop, whether it's playgrounds, clotheslines, solar panels. I rode my bike here, my trike here, actually, and, you know, we're planning all these alternative methods of getting around, but where I park my bike, there's no place at this new place where I can park my trike safely. So, you know, people are going to need a lot more and a lot of things different if we're going to live differently. And so just really take a lot of those externals into account in addition to stories and shadings and setbacks. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. I'm going to speak this early oral communication on the process that we've seen. I'll give details on the agenda items later. I've written to you many times. I appreciate that you read what I've written. The last meeting, we had the final, what was supposed to be final review of the Gateway Code. I found it disturbing that Commissioners Tagney and Simmons were not able to engage in that conversation. I think they've been large contributors to this process. The question tonight for many of us is what we regard as your ethics. You have a situation where you're asked to give your recommendation on a final EIR that came out four days ago. It's 253 dense pages. I spent an hour reading four pages of it. And to give your recommendation to the council on the general plan, Gateway Code, that from anyone's perspective is filled with actual errors. I'm not talking about what I want or what any one person wants. I'm talking about things that you have said in this chamber that are not made it into those documents. So the question is, what are you going to be recommending? Are you going to be recommending the documents as they are now or the documents as they will be? The last meeting, I spoke to the city council, perhaps you saw it. I felt that the Community Development Director hijacked people's conversations nine times, that he said things that were like a misspeaking, perhaps 10 times, and said things that were actually wrong 18 or 20 times. And this influenced the discussion. I bring up the 750 feet, you know, that you work that out. The indoor bike parking is not included in the code despite what's been said. There's no requirement for it. So the question is, is the commission going to correct the errors that we see or send it to the council? What I want to avoid is, as I say, lengthy back-and-forth bouncing where they reject it. First of all, I cannot say what they're thinking, obviously, but the errors have to be corrected at some point. We'll talk about that later, the details. The, I would like to see this thing get passed in its form that you have designed. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak to items not on the agenda? Anybody waiting online? David?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. I want to express my extreme concern over the removal of what seems to be over a dozen large eucalyptus trees along Bayside Road. I understand that the city is evaluating their response to this unpermitted removal of trees and what the consequences will be. And I hope that since the Planning Commission approved a project in the area under the understanding that no trees would be removed and that this was important to the commission, that the commission would want to weigh in on what they feel is an appropriate response to this egregious act. Please consider taking this matter into your consideration at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
That's all we have on, online.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. As always, we appreciate your participation and your input. Next on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar. We have two items on consent this evening. A, approve Planning Commission minutes from our regular meeting, April 23rd, 2024, 5:30 PM. And consent item B, affirm the zoning administrator action of April 25th, 2024, for the American Hospital Multifamily Design Review Project at 3289 Janes Road. Before we review this, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page that because of the Housing Accountability Act, we, as a planning commission, would have to come to the same approval decision as the zoning administrator has. So just making sure we're all clear on that. Ahead of time, would anyone like to pull the item off of consent, or do we have any motions?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar passes. This evening, we have one public hearing, but it's listed on our agenda as a business item, so I will move to business items. Business item A is Adopt Resolution PC 2403, recommending certification of the Environmental Impact Report and Resolution PC 2405, recommending adoption of the General Plan Comprehensive Update and the Gateway Code. Can we please begin with a staff report?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. This is a, this is a big milestone. This is a major milestone in this process. We've been working on the general plan for, you know, Gateway Code for, you know, seven, close to eight years now, from concept to where we are now. And so I just want to recognize that. Today's meeting is different because it is a noticed public hearing. This is part of the actual, in fact, approval process that is legally required, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But all of the meetings that you've had up till now have been business items that are evaluating this. They haven't been publicly noticed. They were part of the process of arriving at the point where you could have this, you know, final, final action that's before you now. And so I just want to describe a little bit about what the action looks like and what the process looks like, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So to start with the, in terms of the process, the Planning Commission is integral to this action. This is what is referred to as a legislative action. We're changing the laws in the City of Arcata, updating the general plan and some zoning ordinances. And so the Planning Commission recommendation is a required step. As I mentioned, this required step was duly noticed, and there are two actions for your consideration tonight. One is to make a recommendation to the city council that they adopt or certify the SEQA documents. And then the second is that they recommend adoption of the documents themselves, the general plan amendments, the Gateway Code amendment that we've been looking at for several years. After you make a recommendation, then the city council will be able to take up your recommendation. The city council will have, in fact, four actions that they're taking, and because of the conflicts of interest at the city council level, they're actually going to take those four actions up in two separate agenda items. And so the first action will be to consider certification of the EIR and adoption of the findings and the statement of overriding consideration. I'll get into what those documents are in just a minute. But before they take any action, they actually have to certify the EIR. They have to take the environmental action first. That'll be done by resolution. The next step will be to, with the smaller subset of the council, and that first action is a smaller subset of the council that isn't conflicted, they'll take another resolution up to approve the gateway plan, the gateway area plan, the element of the general plan that only the three of them can vote on. And then once that is adopted by resolution, they'll consider an ordinance for the Gateway Code. The gateway code is a new zoning code. There are also several changes to the underlying zoning that need to be made in the land use code to set the stage for that transition. You'll recall that the gateway area is largely commercial and industrially zoned currently, and your recommendation was to rezone it so it was commercial mixed use. And so one of the actions that has to happen in the underlying land use code is to change those zoning designations to commercial mixed use, for example. Those actions will be taken by introduction of the ordinance in that meeting when they make the final action, when they make that action, and then it'll become effective 30 days after it's adopted at a second meeting. And then their second action will be on the balance of the general plan. So that smaller subset of the council who's not conflicted is going to take up the gateway area plan, component of the general plan, and then the whole body will take up the rest of the changes to the general plan. And that'll be in the second action. That'll be by resolution. So yours is the first step in these series of public hearings that are noticed and established and ready for public review. In terms of the timeline, your meeting tonight is, as I mentioned, the kickoff for that. The city council tomorrow night, May 15th, will be reviewing the changes that your body has recommended. They'll be looking at those in tabular format, as you did prior to making your final recommendation. We had an Excel file that we were tracking the decisions on, and so they'll look at those. And if they concur, then, you know, the documents stand as they do. If they have changes, then we'll make those changes. And then their publicly noticed hearing is set for May 29th. And on the May 29th meeting is when they will take those, take for the first time a look at those actions I just described, the two agenda items with the four separate actions. And they'll be able to review all the documents, ask questions, hear public comment at that May 29th meeting. Because that's a special meeting, they will not be able to take action at that meeting. And because of sequence of events, holidays, and the need to create special meetings through June, the first opportunity that they'll have to consider formal action on those will be their July 17th meeting. And so the city council will be continuing that publicly noticed hearing item to continue the notification through those separate meeting dates. So that's, that's kind of the process. Before I go on to SEQA, which is another dense topic, I just wanted to ask if there are questions about the process.
Just quickly to be, to confirm, once we take a decision this evening, the city council is going to have what sounds like more than two months to continue to work with, meet and review this ahead of their own taking a final decision? Is that right?
That's, that's correct. From May 29th to July 17th.
Any other Commissioners? Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, I was just curious if the May 29th and the July 17th meeting would be noticed separately or if it's going to be continued from a date certain on the May 29th meeting?
The plan at this point is to continue it. And if at the May 29th meeting, the council decides to have a meeting in the interim, we'll continue to that meeting.
So only once?
Yep.
Not seeing any other questions, I am going to open public comment.
I'm sorry. I did have just a few more items.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. And I will be quick about them. So the, the next section is SEQA, and I just wanted to make sure we're all on page, on the same page with what's going on with the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. So I'd like to kind of walk you through the documents where they're located on the website because your Planning Commission resolutions reference these documents. They're not included as attachments, so it's important for you to understand where these are located. So on our SERP landing page, which you can find by Googling S-I-R-P, Arcata, you will find these different buttons. And to get to the Environmental Impact Report, you click on Environmental Impact Report button, which brings up a description of the Environmental Impact Report process. And it has the documents in order from, from, starting from the Findings of Fact and Statement of Overwriting Considerations, the Final Environmental Impact Report, and the Draft Environmental Impact Report. So that's the, these are the documents that the Planning Commission resolution will refer to. These are the documents the city council resolution will refer to ultimately. Within these documents or within this landing page, there are also the documents that are referenced here, as well as the links above. And then there are also links to the stable project description. So if you recall, when we put out the draft EIR, we identified the December 12, 2023 Arcata general plan and the December, or January 31 version of the Gateway Area Code as the project description for the draft EIR. So those documents are located here as well so that we don't lose track of what the EIR is evaluating. The EIR, the draft EIR was put out. It discussed throughout the framework that SEQA outlines, the various environmental impacts of making this planning decision, identified mitigation measures, and also found that there were subject areas in air quality and cultural resources, specifically for historic resources, where the impacts of the policy that's identified in these documents cannot be mitigated to less than significant. So we have this unmitigated environmental impact. And that's important to understand because that's where the Statement of Overwriting Considerations comes in. The Draft Environmental Impact Report was circulated for a period of just over 30 days, and we, in fact, took public comment after the circulation period until the Draft Environmental Impact Report was published. That's pretty par for the course, standard practice for SEQUAs to, you know, continue to accept comments as long as you, as long as you can. So we actually extended the, the public comment period for a few days to incorporate those additional comments, notably from our partners at Caltrans. And the public comment, we're able to respond to and comment on the disclosure of environmental impacts the Draft Environmental Impact Report provided. The city was then obliged to review those comments and respond to them. And so the final environmental impact report is the summary of the responses to the public comments, summary of the comments that were received, any changes that were made to the Draft Environmental Impact Report in response to those comments, and then a summation of the mitigation plans. It's its primary job. Now, unlike a draft report that you might write and then a final report that you might write, which completely rewrites the draft report and replaces it, the way that SEQA works is that the Draft Environmental Impact Report and the Final Environmental Impact Report work together to provide those disclosure requirements of SEQUA. So the Final Environmental Impact Report... Impact Report is much, much smaller document than the draft is, and it incorporates by reference the draft. And together, those documents are that disclosure document. The third document, the Findings of Fact and the Statement of Overwriting Considerations, its job is to lay out the factual basis for certification of the EIR, lay out the factual basis for the mitigations that are proposed in the final EIR. And prior to certification, the City Council will be actually adopting those and certifying that they agree to those based on the whole of the record. And your recommendation tonight will also be based on reviewing those findings and recommending that to the City Council as you see fit. The Statement of Overwriting Considerations component to this document is really the key statutory piece that allows the city to take this action, even though there are unmitigated impacts. So with regard to air quality, the city of Arcata, the county in general, this region is in a non-attainment status for particulate matter. And any project that is contributing, any large project that's contributing particulate matter, is going to have a significant environmental impact. With the scale of this document, the scale of the types of projects that are provided for, allowed for in these documents, there's just no way to mitigate that. And so we have this unmitigated impact. The document also calls for the allowance to demolish a couple of buildings that were previously identified as historic. A few of the buildings on the Creamery property are identified, the buildings that are out in the back, the outbuildings in the back, and then the concrete tower that's near the back of the property as well. The main body of the Creamery building is not allowed to be demolished through this document. But we just recognize, as we did the public engagement and heard what people were desiring for that property, that there is a real possibility in the future, over the course of this planned period, that the property owners may want to do a housing project on that site. And so that would require the demolition. So we recognize that in this document. The woodworking facility that's just across, just down the street from there is also identified in our documents as a historic building. If you've walked by it, you note that it's slumping. It may be cost prohibitive to fix that building. There's no current plans to demolish it. There's nothing on the table. The property owner has expressed some curiosity about what the options are in the future. And so that building was also included as part of the Statement of Overwriting Considerations, that if that property owner came forward and wanted to build something else, that they would have at least cleared the hurdle for historic resources. There may be other resource impacts that they would have to do additional environmental review on. So those two impact areas were identified in the Draft Environmental Impact Report and carried forward through the Final Environmental Impact Report as unmitigated impacts to the environment. And that's specifically what the Statement of Overwriting Considerations addresses for its environmental review and impact. Basically, what a Statement of Overwriting Considerations allows you to do is to say, even though there's this unmitigated impact, the social benefit that we garner from approving the project outweighs the environmental impact, and so we're going to go ahead and make findings to do that. So that's the SEQA process, the documents that you'd be looking at. I did want to note that, in addition to the comments that we received on the document itself that are included in the Draft Environmental Impact Report, I'm sorry, the Final Environmental Impact Report, we also received comments outside of that. And I wanted to remind the commission, many of you actually weren't here when this decision was made, but we made the strategic decision early on in this process to house all public comment and all agency comment that we receive about your public meetings in one location on the website, so that you know where to go to find them, so that the public knows where to go to find them, so that we're not confused about when the deadline was for getting your comments into the Planning Commission packet. And so very early on in this process, a couple of years ago, we made the decision to house all of the public comment that we receive online. And again, you can find that public comment by going to the Engagement Information tab from the main page. And under the comments submitted, we just renamed this today because it has both comments received from the public as well as agency comments. We've consolidated all of the public comment that we received. And so you did receive public comments from the public, as well as some agency comments that were collected. I did email the agency comments to you today, just to make sure that you had seen those. But this is, you know, if there's any confusion for the commissioner or for the public, this is where you can go to find public comment on this planning process. And then I think with that, you know, I did want to just recognize that, you know, this has been a very lengthy process. The majority of the commission has turned over during the course of this process. We are still asking you to take this massive body of information and make a recommendation to the City Council based on it. You are not required to have read and known and understood every single topic that has happened throughout this entire planning process. So if you have questions about like, well, how am I going to make a decision because I wasn't here from the beginning? That's not what's required. What's required is for you to evaluate the findings based on the information that you have, based on the information that's in the public record, based on the comments that you've received from the public, the deliberations that you've had with your fellow commissioners, and recommendations of staff, that you feel confident making those decisions and moving those forward to the City Council. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about what we're doing here tonight, and then otherwise, I'd recommend you open it up to the, to the public.
Any commissioners have questions about the SEQA part of this evening's staff report? Melissa?
I have a question, but it's not about the SEQA part.
Fire away.
I was just curious if the, in the reading, I noticed that there is an element to the Gateway Plan or the general plan that has to do with the coastal portion of the city. Does this have to get certified by the Coastal Commission after it goes to City Council?
Yeah, we will have a two-step process with the portions that are in the coastal zone that will have to adopt them locally. And then, once they're adopted locally, we'll have to go for a coastal certification before they're effective in the coastal zone.
Okay. With that, now, after a false start, I will open public comment. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern after, oh, whoops. Feel, okay. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record. First commenter?
Ethics is one of the most important things. You might not have been here from the beginning, but you need ethics in your decision. And I emailed you yesterday, forwarded you Arcata Fire District's letter, and basically, it's spelled out, you know, do not be approving anything over three stories at this time. This process should have started about six years ago, so that you could be at a point where the fire district had all the information. I mean, you're basically voting, and you haven't even had the study completed. And then they're going to have to find whether they can financially have the money to have the personnel and the equipment. So if you're going to go ahead and vote, vote on this before all that, in my opinion, you're not the Planning Commission, you're the Gambling Commission, because you're going to be putting people, if something is actually built that's over four, over three stories, and there is a fire that happens, and I'm going to remind you, on January 10th, they brought this up, Sora Place, there was two oven fires. And I've kept track of what's happened across the United States. In New York, there was an oven fire. Kid was playing with it downstairs, and they left the door open, the mother ran out with them, and lost a lot of the neighbors. So these things are happening, and if this was to happen at this, when we don't have any way of, for our fire district, you're putting them at risk, you're putting people at risk, we're going to have the biggest lawsuit. I mean, because they've actually written you, they've come and done some talks to you. We're going to be screwed. We're going to basically be, the city will be bankrupt at the end of this. And not only that, there's going to be some people that are going to have to pay the price. And I don't know whether it's the City Council, or they look at the Planning Commission or your recommendation, but some people are going to be responsible if this happens. So I have no idea where you guys are going with this, because this is just like crazy to be doing this. The other aspect of this, too, is Melissa brought this up from the Coastal Commission, there's another extensive study that's being done there from the standpoint of where a building should be, where we're going to move our wastewater treatment plan in the future. There's a lot, there's deadlines there. So you're, all of those two issues, the fire and that study with the sea level rise is due at the end of 2024, I believe. So, I mean, if you're really doing your job, you'd wait for those studies to be done, then you would take a vote, not take a vote now, and then pass this on. So it's just unacceptable to be doing that at this time. So you have my opinion.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm going to read the aforementioned letter. Arcata Fire District dated April 9, 2024 to Mayor Meredith Matthews. Dear Mayor Matthews, we, the Board of Directors for the Arcata Fire Protection District, are writing to emphasize the critical importance of incorporating adequate fire protection measures into the final drafting of Arcata's 2045 general plan, particularly concerning zoning and form code permitting for residential and mixed-use buildings taller than 40 feet in designated opportunity zones, such as the Gateway Area Plan. Our recommendation is rooted in the fundamental need to ensure the safety of building occupants and the capacity of our fire suppression staff to effectively respond to emergencies. Specifically, we propose that the permitting of such buildings be conditioned upon the establishment of sufficient fire protection features, systems, and emergency service capacity, as outlined in existing fire codes. These include, but are not limited to, considerations such as fire department access, roadway width and height, water supply for fire suppression, automatic fire sprinkler systems, and emphasis on occupant egress, especially given our current staffing limitations. We have previously communicated our concerns to the city in various forums, including letters, presentations, and meetings with key stakeholders. It is our shared responsibility to ensure that AFPD and our mutual aid partners are adequately equipped and trained to respond to fires and emergencies in buildings as anticipated in the general plan. To address these concerns, the city, the district, and Cal Poly Humboldt are collaborating on a standards of coverage analysis conducted by an independent contractor. This analysis aims to provide guidance on expanded staffing, facilities, equipment, and training requirements, along with associated costs. We anticipate this analysis to be complete by late 2024, at which point we can work toward achieving consensus on the necessary measures to fulfill the city's obligations to its residents. However, until funding is established and district expansion is underway, we believe it would be imprudent to approve building permits and begin occupancy in the envisioned residential buildings. The AFPD board anticipates substantial increases in staffing, new or expanded stations, equipment, and training facilities to adequately meet the needs of our growing community. We urge the City Council to consider our recommendation seriously and work collaboratively toward implementing necessary fire protection measures in the final drafting of the 2045 general plan. Sincerely, Eric Loudenz Lager, Board President, Arcata Fire District.
Thank you for that. Next commenter, please?
Hi, my name's Kelsey Martin. I'm with CRTP. I'm here to share my support for the Gateway Area Plan, the Gateway Zoning Code, and the general plan updates. These are bold, progressive documents with evidence-based strategies to support more walkable housing, fight climate change pollution from cars and trucks, and protect against sprawl. Together, these plans will encourage the creation of much-needed housing at the densities and with the designs required to support walking, biking, and public transportation. They also establish clear and comprehensive policies to prioritize safety over speed on all city streets, reduce inequitable subsidies for driving, and increase support for healthier, more affordable, and climate-friendly ways to get around. Recent polling by the city has shown that broad support for the policies included in these plans, more than three-quarters of Arcadians rated housing bike and pedestrian safety improvements as extremely or very important. A majority also supported building height increases to allow more affordable housing and greater walkability. Lastly, I just want to thank the commission and other city committees who have spent countless hours refining these documents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker? Anyone else in the chamber care to speak this evening? Otherwise, we will go to the phones.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Dave Mizerv. I live in the Sunset District, but somehow the portion of the Sunset District I live in has been renamed as the Craftsman's Mall District. If you look at the map, the general plan land use update, it's figure either X or 10 on page 36 of the PDF. But the map shows a district to the north of I Street that includes Craftsman's Mall, and then the land to the north of that. And it's unlike any other zoning area in the city, in that the northern portion of it is industrial, agricultural. The middle portion of it, where Craftsman's Mall was, is the behemoth that's being built. And then is our neighborhood to the south of there. And somehow, this has all been clumped together into one zoning district, which seems very strange to me. I call it gerrypandering. It's where you change the boundaries in order to get what you want. And apparently, what they want is for this all to be, now, I thought that the Planning Commission had made a recommendation that this would be moved from low-density residential to medium-density. But if you look at the map, it's listed as high-density. So I don't know if this was an error or what. But high-density residential in our neighborhood would be just crazy. We currently have, in the whole neighborhood, which I believe goes all the way down to Sunset Avenue, but somehow only goes to Grant Avenue in the drawing in the map, there are about 70 structures at this time, 70 houses. Mr. Strombeck wants to build 70 units right by the tennis courts. And at this point, when you leave the neighborhood and go down to Sunset Avenue, about half the time, you have to stop. And we all are very friendly, and we wave to the person on the other end, and one of us stops, and we drive on through, because there's no two-way traffic through there. So it would just be totally unacceptable to double the number of people there. It would make no sense for the neighborhood, and it makes no sense from a zoning point of view. This is a residential area. And, you know, the high, the high residential areas are along Alliance, L.K. Wood, and Gentoli in the city. So I'm asking you to please not approve the plan as it stands, and to take a closer look at the neighborhood in the sunset there. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brad Wise. You know where I stand. You've read my articles and my letters to you. There are dozens of errors in these documents, small and large. There are things that I've heard you say you want that are not in the documents. I'm going to give just a few examples. As a very small example, the names of two commissioners are misspelled, the names of one council member is misspelled. There are six names in the acknowledgements that are misspelled. The example, as Dave Mizerv said, the map showing the opportunity zone for Craftsman's Mall is labeled residential high-density. You suggested, the commission wanted the southern portion to be residential median-density. The map on page 201 general plan shows a vunner in the wrong place and in the wrong color. The large error is the inclusionary zoning in the Gateway Area. It has the information from before you started talking about it, before you and the council came up with numbers. These can all be fixed, but they have to be fixed. In the, in terms of electric vehicle type. These can all be fixed, but they have to be fixed. In terms of electric vehicle chargers, I think that's a pet subject, there is a clause that was put in, I'm not sure when it was put in, in the implementation measures. But I don't think it's going to accomplish what you want. The EIR says that mitigation for traffic noise will require developers to include, require them to include central air conditioning. That's one mitigation. Another would be to lower the traffic speed and lower the noise. But that's not what's in the EIR. There are actual factual errors in the AR. I said earlier that when you recommend this document, you are attesting by law that you have read and reviewed it, at least to the extent that is necessary. I think this is a legally vulnerable spot in this process, and I don't want it to come back to haunt you. The staff report, the paragraph on the Arcade Fire District's letter, I think is minimized and inaccurate. I've written to you about that. First of all, also, don't believe me, read this yourself. I know you have. The question is what to do from this point. Correct the errors. It'll take about six weeks, I think, and then you're done. Thanks.
Thanks for those comments.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry, and I haven't done a thorough job with these documents. But I really appreciate the history of what people like Fred have done throughout this whole process as a person at the podium, as opposed to a person on the dais. So, you know, again, I spoke about the history of how Humboldt and Arcade was dramatically changed in a short period of time in 1890s. And if we make dramatic changes in a short period of time, you know, are we going to be able to live with them? And I just share some anecdotal things about the campus, for example, the group that was hired to help the campus develop their expansion and all. Some of the people at the public meeting, you know, afterwards, I was talking to them, and I was saying, they're moving so fast. And they kind of agreed that, you know, slow and steady, small is beautiful, who are we, what do we really want to be? And once you make a quick decision and, you know, nail it down or cement it in place, it's really hard to take it back. So I just, you know, I shared this with you. So when you're thinking about all of this, please think about what is best for this community, what is best for this area, what is best for our future. And the future's not going to be what the past was or what the present currently is. It's going to be a whole lot different. It needs to be a whole lot different. So these plans and these things need to really reflect our understanding of our humility about where we are and what we're doing. So let's be humble and humble.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Staff and Commissioners. I'll be fairly brief. I spoke during that length in the past. I'm not sure what's land and what happened, but I'm just going to circle back to one thing, a few basic things that were in the Gateway draft. And I feel like they've been pushed further and further away from what the goals are. I mean, as this is moved forward with the primary idea of massing, maximum massing with buildings. And it's just, you know, citing step backs, setbacks. I think this can work with it. I think you can scale into existing neighborhoods. I think you need to value, you know, the residential rooftop solar because any net solar is actually going to contribute to the energy, you know, clean energy solution. At the last Plan Co. meeting, one of the commissioners actually claimed the residential rooftop solar was insignificant and to value more the massing and not consider that as being a part of a solution. You know, they live in a neighborhood that's actually a conservation area. Their house sits high on a hill. They will never be shadowed. And I think on a lot of levels, things like that could be hypocrisy. So I would really like you to circle back on some of the ideas in this plan and what they were put forward with, just with the idea that this could work with everybody. I mean, the idea of scaling in the neighborhoods are basic concepts. And anyway, thanks for your time. I'm going to move on with this.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else in the chamber like to speak? David? Commenters online? Go ahead, Lisa.
Hello. Hi, Commissioners. I do not feel that four days is long enough for the community to review the FEIR responses to comments and questions on the draft EIR, or for staff to make the changes needed. For example, there is a response to a comment I made that I am unsure when and how the change within the document will be made, specifically the change in the implementation measure GM-3 to indicate the process for reducing the sphere of influence to exclude prime agricultural lands to the west and north. I'm also wondering about the absence of a glossary for definitions in the general plan, and how mistakes such as the density issue in Sunset and the inclusionary zoning issue in Gateway that have been pointed out, how these are going to be corrected before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Go ahead, Genevieve.
Hi. Good evening, Commission. My name's Genevieve Serna. I'm a resident and homeowner here in the city of Arcata. And I just wanted to voice my support for this draft EIR and, you know, second the staff recommendation that you went to the council. I've said it for quite some time that the Gateway Plan and then the changes to the general plan in general are some really exciting changes. The city of Arcata has always been one that stood by, you know, environmental protection, protecting our green spaces, reducing vehicle miles traveled. And I think that a general plan like this and then the things that are included in the Gateway will put those ideologies into some concrete action. So I second their recommendation to pass this. And thank you again for all of the work that you've done. You know, I'm looking forward to seeing some of these things come to fruition in the city. I'm not somebody who's afraid of seeing some more neighbors, some more faces around town. And I'm definitely excited to see what kind of wonderful businesses will be able to pop up out of this new plan. So those are my two cents. And again, thank you for all of your work.
Thank you for your comments. We have no others online. No other comment is waiting.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. As always, we appreciate your participation and input and all of the comments that were shared here this evening. I will bring this back to the commission for discussion. I do want to say just personally that this process has been a lot of different things over a very long time. Myself personally, I've been working and volunteering on this for nearly five years. We have had, as a city, more than 100 meetings about this project, many, many hundreds of hours of discussion, public input, joint study sessions, planning commission, city council. So whatever else people may think about how this process has evolved, it has certainly not been rushed or a quick process. I can personally attest to that. I would like to bring it back to the commission and see if anyone has any additional comments or discussion points about this item. Go ahead, Melissa.
I have two questions, kind of point information and point clarity. On this map here, the Craftsman Mall, which was discussed in public comment, I see that there's a black hatch on the top two-thirds of the Craftsman Mall that would imply residential high. But there's not a black hatch on the lower half. And I see other residential mediums also don't have that. So although the perception can be that that entire area is residential high, the intent right now is for the lower portion to be residential medium. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And that's, I zoomed into this. I'm glad you asked. I wanted to address a couple of the comments that were made. The green without hatching is residential medium. The green with hatching is residential high. And you can see that as indicated on the table here. Residential medium is green, similar color, but without hatching. The other, as long as I've got the mic, if I could just address real quickly the sphere of influence question that was brought up, I believe is on the very next, I'm sorry, that's in the growth management element. But the map has not been amended. But what I did do to address that is I wrote in here, remove from sphere of influence. And so you'll see that indicated in the areas where we've talked about reducing the sphere of influence and bringing that back down to the city boundary. You may recall that this was a late change in our understanding of Lafco's approach. Previously, they, my understanding was that they indicated that they would not support reducing the sphere of influence. In subsequent conversations, they said they would support that. It was timely to add that change in now. And so your recommendation would be to remove those areas from the sphere of influence that are outside the city limits, that are not already inside of an urban services boundary, that do not, that are not planned for urban annexation. There was another comment about the inclusionary zoning requirement. The inclusionary zoning was identified as a citywide measure. And so that'll end up in the land use code. That will not end up in a general plan. It's not required to be as part of a, you know, the policy document. It can be implemented as part of the, you know, the specifics aren't in the policy. The specifics will be in the zoning code. And so those will be handled outside of the general plan, inside the zoning ordinance.
David, it seems to me I have the inclusionary zoning paragraph from the Gateway Code, and it seems correct to me.
Can you tell me what page you're on? This is what the planning commission had recommended. The city council made an amendment to this, and this is actually going to get pulled out of this, this will be pulled out of the Gateway Code and put inside the land use code because it'll apply to citywide, is what the city council decided.
And the city council sort of ruled us, right? Because it doesn't make sense for us to go back and
Yeah, and that is direction that the, you know, city council has already provided. My intent was certainly not to conflict with the city council's direction in this document. And the, but the ordinance to adopt what they had recommended has not been developed yet. That'll be part of the implementation process for the general plan.
Anyone else have comments on this? Joel?
I would like to hear from the planning director about the comments from the Fire District, their letter. Do you have a response to that?
You know, the city council, you know, received that communication. You know, we forwarded it out to, you know, the planning commission. You know, I believe that we are, you know, continuing to work with the Fire District to address their concerns. There are some code changes that, to my knowledge, we have recommended, the Fire District staff have agreed to, but we do not have confirmation yet that the, you know, that that is, you know, acceptable for the Fire District to add into the Gateway Code. And essentially, what the recommendation was of our building official was to, as we had discussed sort of conceptually early on, was to take some of the fire provisions that are identified for higher-density, larger buildings and adopt them into more mid-rise-style buildings. And so, for example, I'm not exactly sure what the floor level is that, what the threshold is. But when you get above a certain threshold, the width of the stairwells needs to be wider to accommodate larger, you know, evacuation pathway. And so that was one of the recommendations, was to make the stairwells larger. And, you know, I don't remember off the top of my head the other provisions, but there were provisions like that where we're pulling down from taller buildings into smaller buildings, these provisions that, you know, are safer for and better for, you know, for fire access. The Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief agreed that these were good provisions that they felt like went a long way to addressing their concerns. There is going to be additional work that we need to do over time. Certainly, if the city council, you know, and I understand, you know, the objectives of the city and its housing and economic development, you know, goals and objectives, you know, are, you know, not the exact same as the Fire District's goals and objectives. And that is, you know, through the relationship that we've built, we need to work through those issues, you know, to find solutions that, you know, accommodate both agencies. So I think that work is ongoing. You know, I understand what I am saying is not, you know, exactly what the, you know, what the Fire District has said in its letter. But I think there are elements in there that, you know, we both have expressed the desire to coordinate, communicate, and collaborate on these solutions. I think, you know, the board president pointed to some of those collaborations in their letter. And, you know, we fully support those, and we'll continue to work with the Fire District.
I mean, with Dan here, I think I'm the only one on the commission that was here for a number of these discussions. But when we were specifically dealing with the fire issue and concerns of the Fire Department, we were also thinking about road safety. And while on the one hand, for example, wider streets allow for faster response time for trucks, that also leads to, you know, increased traffic fatalities. So we're kind of caught weighing out traffic safety and fire safety. So it was a complicated issue. But certainly the fact that, you know, streets and traffic accidents are responsible for, you know, way 10x fatalities and fire was part of the, part of the calculation. We were weighing out concerns from the Fire District.
Matt, did you want to weigh in?
Well, the only other thing I'll say is that in the final EIR, there are a number of responses to comment that deal with issues related to the Fire District, which I found really helpful in understanding how all this works. So I appreciated that.
Yeah, just one more point information. I just want to ask staff that if a building permit comes through for a three- or four-story building, does that automatically get referred to someone at the Fire Department? Do they get to weigh in on each individual building permit that comes through?
Yeah, the Fire Marshal reviews all building plans. I think that's the most direct response to your question.
I'd like to respond to one of the comments about EV charging. The Gateway Plan mentions prioritizing EV charging several times, but there is no specific mention in the code as to how that should occur. And state law requires that 10% of parking spaces in multifamily dwellings and hotels